Well, good afternoon. Still good morning. Excuse me, everyone. The time is eleven oh three AM. It's Monday, June twelfth. Twenty twenty-three. And I'd like to call to order this Tuesday study session for the Pierce County Council. I am not, but my speakers are off. Just want to make sure the echo is gone. Okay. I'll let staff work on the echo issue. I want to let members know that we do have a closed session scheduled for the very end of this Monday study session. So we'll get through our agenda and then move into the closed session. Item number two is review of the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting agenda, Mr. Cox.
Yes, Chair Mello. Members of the council, Jeff Cox, council staff. You have in front of you the amended meeting agenda for June thirteenth. During twenty-two's council meeting starts at three o'clock here in the council chambers. The first item we have on the agenda is under section, section five, consent agenda and under actions on resolutions. You have proposal R twenty twenty-three ninety-five, which is a resolution of the council adopting a new organization chart for the office of the Pierce County Council. This is for referral of the Rules and Operations Committee with the final council hearing date of June twenty-seven. Under item D, actual grant applications, you and awards, you have a medical examiner approved four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. One hundred S two. Under item F, you have a motion authorizing the hiring of Julie Murray to fill the vacancy in the position of council chief of staff pursuant to section six point oh three B of the administrative guidelines for the office of Pierce County Council. Under that, you have under proclamations, awards, and appointment sports commissions. The first step you have is proposal R twenty twenty-three ninety-three. And this is a resolution proclaiming June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three is Juneteenth in Pierce County. This will be for final consideration. The next you have is proposal R twenty twenty-three ninety-two, which is a resolution proclaiming June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three is World Blood Donor Day in Pierce County. And this is for final consideration as well. Under item eight ordinances, you'll be considering two proposals. First is proposal twenty twenty-three twenty. That's an ordinance amending chapter two point four three of the code. Birth to twenty-five advisory board for infant, children, youth, and young adult development, fighting representative from the superintendent's of public counties, Pierce County Public Schools, to the birth to twenty-five advisory board. The committee recommendation of the Health and Human Services Committee on June sixth was a due pass recommendation. Next on your agenda is proposal twenty twenty-three twenty-one. This is an ordinance declaring as surplus certain county-owned real property located at one five eight seven eight sixty-sixth Avenue East Tacoma, Washington, commonly referred to as the Green Forest Edition track day. It consists of land and improvements on tax parcel forty-two, four-two-four-two, one, zero, 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 three, five, zero. And it authorizes the executive to pursue disposal of the property pursuant to chapter two point one one zero of the Pierce County Code Property Management. This received due pass recommendation of Rules and Operations Committee on June fifth, and this is up for final consideration. Under title, under nine of your agenda resolutions, you have three proposals. The first is proposal R twenty twenty-three seventy-two. This is a resolution establishing meeting times for council retreats and committees of the whole meetings for consideration of county budget issues in twenty twenty-three. This received a due pass recommendation Rules and Operations Committee on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and it's up for final consideration. Second, you have R twenty twenty-three seventy-five, a resolution authorizing the county executive or designate to execute a funding agreement between the county and Washington State Department of Transportation regarding construction of the Puget Sound Gateway Program. Now, this received a due pass recommendation Rules and Operations Committee on May thirtieth, and it's up for final consideration. Final resolution for consideration is R twenty twenty-three eighty-seven S. This is a resolution approving certain expenditures of the taxpayer accountability funds, twenty twenty-three reserve funding as appropriated in ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash seventy-six. S two. This received a due pass recommendation as substituted at the Health and Human Services Committee on June sixth, and that is your that's your council agenda for June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. There's been a request that item number two under ordinances, so proposal number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one. This is declaring a certain property on sixty-sixth Avenue East as surplus. There's been a request that we postpone council consideration of this. Don't think it's ready for prime time. So, Mr. Cox will work with you and other staff to, for the appropriate motion. The recommendation is going to be to postpone this and we'll, we'll work further with executive staff, whether we postpone it indefinitely or to a date certain. And then we have the that's the one item I wanted to call our attention to. We'll have more conversation about the medical examiner request for four hundred and twenty thousand dollars in vacancy savings in just a little bit. Before we get to that, are there any other questions other than the medical examiner's request? Are there any other questions about tomorrow's council meeting agenda? Not seeing any, and there are no amendments that we're aware of at this time for any of these items. So we'll move to vacancy savings request, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Chair Mello, Paul Bokey, council staff. You have in front of you, we don't have this often, but today we do ordinance number twenty twenty-one, one hundred S two, which is, was the original budget document. Section twelve states that when a position funded by this ordinance goes unfilled or becomes vacant, the funds appropriated for the associated salary and benefits shall not be spent for another purpose unless approved by the director of finance of the Finance Department for expenditures of less than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And expenditures for severance, overtime, or salary and benefit costs for positions in the Sheriff's Department Corrections Bureau, excuse me, and so they can be used. All other expenditures must be approved by the county council through motion, resolution, or ordinance. Today, you're being asked to do that for the medical examiner's office in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. They have currently available vacancy savings of eight hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And you see there in the narrative that the medical examiner's office entered into a contract with forensic pathology staffing to provide critical forensic pathologists and pathologist assistant services while the medical examiner's office recruited for the third forensic pathologist position. This position has been vacant since October of twenty twenty-one. At the same time, the opioid epidemic homicides and increasing county population have resulted in increased caseloads. These contracted services are essential to maintain accreditation. In twenty twenty-two, it was anticipated that the contracted services would only be needed for a few months. However, due to delays in filling the third forensic pathologist position, medical examiner's office must amend the contract to provide services through August twenty twenty-three, and you received that twenty-one day notification last month. The medical office, examiner's office is requesting the use of vacancy savings to pay for the contract services. And I believe that Mr. Gary Robinson is online from our finance department. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to be sure I understand this. The time period we're talking about is November twenty-two to November twenty twenty-two to August twenty twenty-three. The four, four hundred and twenty thousand is for that full nine months. Is that correct? Ten months?
I'm gonna have to ask Mr. Robinson that.
I'm counsel chair. This is, is Gary Robinson, Councilmember Campbell. That is correct. This is for the time period when the contract was entered into through August. The medical examiner's office has offered a position to a third forensic pathologist who has accepted. So they're going to be joining the staff in the summer. The initial authorization for utilization of vacancy savings was made by the Finance Department. That was below two hundred and fifty thousand dollars projected cost through August or to have that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar level exceeded, which is why the request is before you now at the higher level of over four hundred thousand.
But to be clear, it's not an additional four twenty, it's a total of four twenty for the about ten months of service from the contracting service to help us keep up with our caseload.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And thank you for that question. I had a similar question. I think I am trying to further understand the staffing need here. So we hired a pathologist, a third pathologist, and that is going to eliminate the need for this kind of contracting service, contracting services at this level. Is that what we're understanding?
Yes, it is, because the and there are standards that the National Association of Medical Examiners has for the number of cases for per forensic pathologist. And with the third position, the medical examiner's office is expecting that they would be within those standards. So the contract likely is not going to need to be utilized after the third position is filled.
I'm, I guess I'm, and I realize you're not the medical examiner, Mr. Robinson, so definitely giving you some, some grace here. We might follow up as appropriate. But do you know, I'm trying to reconcile how payment for contracting contracted services at four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for ten months, we can replace that with one new FTE. I'm assuming that FTE is not going to cost us anywhere near four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So I'm having trouble just reconciling the financing here.
There is a per per autopsy rate that is included within the contract plus travel cost that are covered in the contract. The entity that is providing the service is based in Nevada. So for a autopsy to be completed, there is both the travel cost and the cost of the autopsy itself, which is in part why the cost has been at the level that it has over the last few months. And certainly with a full-time medical examiner, the travel cost would not be incurred by the office.
It's expensive. And we couldn't find these shared services from anywhere else in Puget Sound. It's, did we try that?
Or for a portion of the time period prior to the October date that was referenced by Mr. Bokey, the medical examiner has been able to hire some staff on a temporary basis. But the market is such that it's been very difficult to have candidates be available to perform the work even on a temporary basis. And it's a very fortunate that a medical examiner's office was able to have a individual accept a position starting in the summer.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. And a follow-up. Thank you for that. Apparently pathology staffing is a growing business. What will the pathologist level three, what is their annual salary?
That's salary, and I'm doing this from recollection. Councilmember Campbell, I think, is around two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, and then there would be benefits in addition to that base salary.
So three fifty.
Okay, I, I can get the, the exact number for you.
I don't need it, but if others up here want it, yeah, why don't we go ahead just so that we have that. That puts the four twenty into a little better context then. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Customer Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. Just to add a little context, we have a national shortage of anything and anyone to deal with pathology. It's been flagged. We recently had a conversation with the MMIWP Task Force, and they were talking to one of our sister counties or fellow counties has a medical examiner that's in their eighties, and they know they cannot find someone to replace them. So he still does that at eighty. And so, yeah, it's the thing, and it's a problem. So, thank you.
Wow. Customer Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. And just to add on that, I believe we were very lucky to even get a medical examiner for the county when the other one left, whatever the situation was. So we're, we've been blessed for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Robinson, for answering our questions and educating us a bit about the need here. Thank you, Mr. Bokey. This will be on tomorrow's council meeting agenda, and also thank you for the follow-up to come, Dr. Robinson. That brings us to item three, review of committee agendas for the week. Mr. Cox.
Yes, Chair Mello, members of the council, Jeff Cox, council staff. The amount you have before you, the amount of meeting scheduled for the week of June twelfth through the sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. We've already conducted the Rules and Operations Committee meeting, and we're presently in the eleven o'clock Monday study session. There will be a further review later on in this meeting of a discussion of the SR five twelve and South Pierce connectivity studies by WASDOT. That's Washington State Department of Transportation. And there will be a discussion of administrative items as well, and there'll be a closed session afterwards. At one thirty today, a public safety committee meeting that they all can, listening, or excuse me, taking testimony from the Pierce County Sheriff, a presentation by Nick Hausner and Jason Youngman, and that will be on force, use of force training by the sheriff. On Tuesday, June thirteenth, the Economic Infrastructure Development Committee is holding a nine-thirty meeting, and I think you have two issues, two proposals in front of them, and two presentations. The first is proposal R twenty twenty-three eighty-nine. That's a resolution initiating an analysis of proposed locations for automated traffic safety cameras with certain school zones, within certain sewer zones, and related requirements as a precursor to establishing a school zone automated traffic safety camera program. The date for the final council hearing on this proposal is June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Next, you have proposal twenty twenty-three sixteen. That's an ordinance granting an unexclusive franchise to the town of Eatonville for the location of sewer lines on certain county-owned rights away and authorizing the executive to execute the said franchise. The date of final council hearing on this will be June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Next, you have a presentation on Workforce Central, and it's a Workforce Central report. The presenter is Katie Condit, Chief Executive Officer of that operation. And then next up, you have an arts program report, and the presenter will be Betty Capastani, and she's the Director of Economic Development for Pierce County. And at noon, you, you will have the study session. And the discussion will include Chair's topics, council priority discussion, and other business that have Superior Court presentation and an executive session subject to R C W four-two, thirty-one, ten, one, I. Three o'clock, there will be the council meeting. You have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Cox about the committee agendas for this week? Not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Cox. Item number four is discussion of administrative items. Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, don't have any items to discuss today on that category. I was getting queued up for your next item, which is the WASDOT presentation.
Thank you. Let's move right into that.
All right. Thank you. So today in your Zoom room, we have George, and I apologize for if I mispronounced the gentleman's last name, Mazur, from the Washington State Department of Transportation and his team members. They've been asked to brief the council on two studies that WASDOT or Washington State Department of Transportation is currently engaged in. Those two studies are the State Route five twelve corridor study. And then the second study is the South County Multimodal Connectivity Study. So those items are in your briefing packet. You're looking at a PowerPoint. There's a number of slides, so I expect this is going to be, you know, probably a half hour item. So it's going to take a little bit of time to get through this. So with that in mind, I think we'll go ahead and turn things over to and George again. You can correct me when you come on, the proper pronunciation of your last name. I'm Mr. Mazur from the Washington State Department of Transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Good morning. Are you able to hear me?
We can hear you well.
Perfect. Thank you. So my name is George Mazer. I'm multimodal planning manager for Wash Dot Olympic Region. You are very close, but thank you for the try. Wanted to, thank you for giving us the opportunity this morning to brief you on the two studies, both of which are nearing project report status and finalization, recommendations, and conclusions. I want to begin by first thanking the Pierce County staff across multiple departments who've done a great job of guiding us on this work and providing tremendous amount of support and data and analysis. We wouldn't have gotten as far as we have gotten without them, and we're indebted to all of the work that, that they've provided. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So we'll be talking about two studies here. The, I'll begin with the SR five twelve corridor study, which is highlighted in red on the screen you see there. And then we'll talk a bit about the South Pierce Multimodal Connectivity Study, and that study area is kind of in the, the salmon colored area. What I wanted to point out on this slide is, is these two quarters are part of a whole series of actions, projects, and studies that are underway in Pierce County. Several of those are on I five. On the kind of the lower left is the I five, margined amounts, Planning Environmental Linkages Study, which is finishing up also, and will be transitioning to a NEPA phase. Moving kind of north from there, there's a green color, which is the JBLM Phase Three Project, which is in procurement phase. Moving further north, kind of in the lighter green, is a HOV gap closure project between thirty-eighth and Thorn Lane. And that project is funded and is slated, I believe, in the twenty thirties for implementation. And then in the purple are a series of projects involving SR one sixty-seven completion project and the SR one sixty-seven master plan. So the two quarters we're talking about today are pieces in this overall plan. I'll first talk about SR five twelve because the, the recommendations out of there and the activities in SR five twelve really affect what occurs further south in the South Pierce County area. So if we can go to the next slide, please. And we can go one more right there. It's steady need. Thank you. So we'll first talk about SR five twelve. The, the two projects have a very different focus. SR five twelve is much more focused on freeway operations, operational needs, and the, the impact and interaction on the arterial surface system at the interchange areas. So we're really focused in on that traffic operations during the weekday peak period. But we also recognize that outside of that peak period, it's kind of a tenuous situation in the weekday, the midday, and the weekend, and any blips in operations on SR five twelve have quickly propagate and, and block operation of the corridor and in connecting corridors. So it's, it's, it's heavily saturated, heavily used subarea and corridor that has implications for the surrounding areas. But also going through here is SR five twelve has a certain amount of a barrier effect for pedestrians and bicyclists in the area, particularly with schools on one side and the neighborhoods that they serve on the other side. And have a very heavy focus on the safety performance potential for all users, particularly vulnerable road users. So if we can have the next slide, please, on the performance gaps. Touched on these in the previous slides. A lot of issues are access and connectivity for active transportation users, operational challenges, complex travel patterns through the area. Really, SR five twelve links together with I five, SR one sixty-seven, and four oh five to provide kind of a through a bypass route to I five through Seattle. So it's, it's part of, again, a link system here. But operationally, a lot of challenges with some of the geometric configurations in the areas, having very short merge and diverge area, areas, and then some adjacent arterial road systems. We can go to the next slide, please. So at a big picture level, there are four blocks that Wash Dot is recommending as part of what we're calling our strategic vision package for the SR five twelve. So the first block is ultimately quarter-wide managed lanes between I five and SR one sixty-seven, taking advantage of the I five HOV project, which will complete, be complete through Pierce County and the SR one sixty-seven ETLs that are part of the master plan and provide direct connections between the HOV lanes and I five, the ETL and one sixty-seven, all the way through SR five twelve, and potentially some mid corridor direct access ramps at, at some key locations, which ultimately will be determined through further study where those would be. The second block below that are arterial connection upgrades, existing interchanges, upgrades to most of those and to the ramp, ramp terminals on SR five twelve, and at a couple of locations and select new crossings, not new interchanges, but just new crossings of SR five twelve to improve some of the arterial connectivity through the area. The third piece is facilitating transit service, both expanding some of the service options, and then providing some additional route options for high-capacity transit. Right now, the Pierce Transit proposal is a BRT along one hundred and twelfth with a managed lane along SR five twelve. This could present another option, potentially in addition to or in lieu of a local service on one hundred and twelfth. And the final block of recommendations here deals with active transportation to improve the existing crossings and bring it into better compliance with Wash Dot's Complete Streets Guidance, supporting the county trail plans, and then removing other burial locations along the way, hopefully getting down to a half mile or less separation between crossings of SR five twelves for vulnerable road users. So those are the four main blocks from there. The next three slides, you really stepped through the individual components that are part of that. In the interest of time, I'm not going to step through the details on here. It is phased in over time. Ultimately, that managed lane concept is a long-term or a very long-term, but seeing opportunities kind of building from the two ends with direct connections at I five and SR one sixty-seven, and ultimately filling in the, the lane in between. And then the proposal would be to also phase the interchange upgrades, focusing in on the most congested ones right now, as well as a couple of the interchanges that are slated for BRT service or that have very heavy transit service. So those would be prioritized first, and then ultimately looking at the other interchanges and upgrades to those over time. And then there are a series of recommendations in here phased again for active transportation crossings, initially looking for some short-term improvements at the existing crossings, and then prioritizing new crossings at locations where there's the, the heaviest potential for either access to school or to serve known areas of high active transportation usage. So we can go to the next slide. And this is just the eastern end of the corridor, those recommendations, and we go to the next slide. And this supplements the maps that you see there. Talks a little bit more about who might be the lead on some of these. So we certainly recognize that this is not going to be one that Wash Dot is going to implement itself. Clearly, things on SR five twelve and the main line and the ramps would be in, would be a Wash Dot lead. But when we start talking about the, the transit and some of the active transportation elements, these are items that Wash Dot will need to work with, whether it be Pierce Transit or the county to, to seek funding on those and ultimately to come up with the ultimate solution and, and, and implement that over time. Next slide, please. Just to give a little flavor of the amount of activity we've had on here, this slide steps through all of our stakeholder engagement and public engagement we've conducted along the way. We've had four stakeholder advisory group meetings. Also had an online open house and continuous interaction through our project website. If we go to the next slide. At this point, we do have our draft study report is on the street. I think we've completed our review or about to complete the review cycle for that draft report. The final study report coming out by the end of June, and will be then on our webpage a few weeks after, after that, in the first part of July. So I pause for a moment here and just see if there are any questions or feedback on the five twelve before we get to South Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Major.
Thank you, Mr. Mazer, because we're hitching.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mazer. I just wanted to clarify when you were talking about new crossings. Are you talking about crossings for pedestrians or cross because or crossings? Like connections of streets that would also include pedestrian, but also vehicles?
Yeah, our recommendation is both is to look at both predominantly ones that would be for active transportation, but there are a few locations where we would see the need arises for consideration of a vehicle crossing.
Okay. And then my second question and happy to, we want to maybe send it to me later, but what is a strategic bottleneck?
Oh, okay. That is our way of talking about the the congestion effect created by the interchanges predominantly, and that is both the the cross the bridge crossing itself, the ramps and the ramp terminals near the bridge and the backup onto the main line. So we we just kind of use that term to talk about all the fixes at the interchanges.
Okay, thank you. I was just I hadn't seen that before and I always feel like bottlenecks are one of the things you're trying not to do when you're moving traffic.
And I guess we're we're using the term there strategic bottleneck removal.
Oh, okay. There we go. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mazer. I'm sorry if I missed it, but what are the timeline? What's the timeline associated with the various projects you've walked us through?
So overall, the 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 study horizon is twenty fifty is the long term. The kind of what we stepped through, the the nearer term projects are twenty thirty, twenty thirty five time horizon. The midterm would be twenty thirty five to twenty forty five, and then longer term is twenty forty five onward. Recognizing that a lot of the major capital pieces, particularly completing the managed lanes and most of the interchange or strategic bottleneck removal would be at twenty forty afterwards, just the lead time needed to fund and to develop those projects.
Thank you. I have one more question before you go on to the South Pierce projects. I think you know that, well, I'm certain you know that the county has invested in the Canyon Road Corridor, especially from Frederickson to five twelve. What is the anticipated improvements? Well, are are you anticipating that truck traffic would take Canyon to to five twelve and then use five twelve to get to one sixty seven and or I five, depending on where they're going? Is that a major assumption in your analysis? And if so, what specific freight mobility investments are being made with with freight and Frederickson in mind?
So we certainly recognize that Canyon Road is is an item of of intense interest and continued consideration and analysis. Our starting assumption for this for this work, this project and for the South Pierce is that the Canyon Road extension would proceed as it's currently in the capital investment program. So it would kind of allow a little bit more distribution of the truck traffic using the new connection into the gateway program. So if that if a decision were made to change direction, there probably need to be further analysis and further consideration of of what the changes and impacts might be on some of those travel patterns. But just to be clear, we we you know, given the fact that it's still on the books in the capital improvement program, we proceeded with that assumption. The second part of your question was in terms of the the freight improvement packages. Many of the items that I quickly stepped through, particularly some of the strategic bottleneck improvements did have a freight flavor to them. We have a few more recommendations as part of the South Pierce study for Canyon Road itself, south of SR five twelve to to address some of the the truck challenges along that corridor. But within the five twelve corridor, a lot of the interchange upgrades were were influenced by the truck travel patterns.
Just repeating what you said there at the end, many of the improvements you are studying here on the five twelve will have a freight mobility benefit.
Correct.
Thank you. And just reminding us that five twelve does intersect with one sixty seven and the new Peterstown Gateway Project we're investing in heavily. Please proceed.
Are we ready to go on to South Pierce?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you. All right. So the South Pierce study, and I think several of you have attended our either our PAC meetings or some briefings that we've done through the community over the past several months. A lot of the information might be repeat for some of you, for others of you, might be your first time through. So you have a lot of ground to cover. So the the study need we've talked about many times, particularly and and this is where we get to a difference between the five twelve study, which is predominantly freeway focus and South Pierce where you're dealing with arterial and collector roadways through an established neighborhood. So Washed Up brings a little bit more focus and sensitivity on the safety performance when we're moving off of a of a mainline freeway facility. So we really emphasize safety performance and the target zero goals and the the interaction with the multimodal options throughout the study. And it's been a heavy emphasis as we've conducted the analysis, we went to performance gaps and we've come up with some of our recommendations. But we also recognize that there are certain parts of this very large sub area where concerns about roadway congestion and whether that be in a north south movement or an east west direction are of a great interest to some neighborhoods and some of the interest groups. If we can go on to the next slide, please. So about three months ago, our study team conducted an analysis where we looked at what we call some illustrative packages or hypothetical investment scenarios. And what we had found or what we looked at was, if you said, if we looked at a package of 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 non capital, more operational focus, safety focus, transit focus investment, what kind of performance benefit would we get on that versus two other packages? That what we call Package B would be a collection of investments predominantly on the county arterial system, closing some of the gaps on the system and increasing capacity on on other roadway lengths. And then the third package, we call Package C, would invest a lot of that capacity increase in the state highway system. So it's three, it it turns out to be very different ways you can approach the the performance gaps here, shifting the investment in in into certain elements of the system. And then in all of those, all three of those, there is the interest in improving the connection between SR one sixty one and SR one sixty two in the general vicinity of Military Road East. We conducted that as a standalone analysis because it could be layered on top of any of these other illustrative packages that focus a little bit more on the middle and western part of the study area. So we'll look at kind of how that connection can add on and I'll actually present a little bit of information later on separately on that particular item. Next slide, please. So we presented this information about three months ago on the the three different illustrative packages and kind of the performance benefits that could be achieved with each of those three. What we had found was that from a kind of a geographic equity standpoint and kind of paying for the buck is that this package A, which is very light on the major capital investments, gave a pretty hefty return and particularly in terms of meeting our safety performance targets and in delivering a lot of multimodal options. But we recognize that there in in throughout the study area and particularly in some neighborhoods, there's still that interest in improving the connectivity and providing some very localized congestion reduction benefits. So we went through a process of of bringing in the highest performing elements from those other two illustrative packages, packages B and C with the county road system and then some elements of the state highway capacity investment into what we've we're calling now our draft vision package. And we went through a couple rounds of of work with the technical advisory committee and the political advisory committee to kind of fine tune that list. So if we can go to the next slide, we'll step through some of those elements. So what we're looking for is the strategies and programs that first and foremost enhance the crash reduction potential and protect vulnerable road users. Really emphasize efficiency on the existing transportation system. So there's a lot of investment in intersection improvements, in traffic signal upgrades and and similar elements where we're not really adding a tremendous amount of new pavement. Looking at the active transportation network apps, expanding transit service area within and adjacent to the urban growth area. And the issue of the UGA is going to come up further in the discussion here and how that interacts with a lot of our recommendations and the policy that the council has adopted in terms of how to focus certain types of investment and and future growth within the UGA. And then finally, widening or extending select county roadways to deal with some of the regional connectivity issues. So if we move to the next slide. The next four slides stepped through in a very high level, the recommendations in 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 this. So roundabouts at key intersections, as I mentioned, the traffic signal upgrades and turn lanes at key intersections. That's what we call our traffic operations and safety strategies. You might hear us use the word TSMO, T S M O every so often. We use that interchangeably with the notion of traffic operations in in this presentation. Next slide. Continuing on with traffic operations, so some access management to reduce those conflict points, and that's very important for multimodal safety and protecting vulnerable road users. And it's also access management is a very good strategy for, you know, reducing congestion from turning on and off of of the major roadways and to reduce some of those very localized bottlenecks. And then finally, the final pieces here is something we'd heard a lot through our online open house and public outreach, request for improved street lining, paving shoulders in certain areas and and some of the other items you see here are some of the feedback that we have received. Next slide, please. Active active transportation strategies. We focused really on on trying to provide a certain level of investment. As we point out here, a certain number of mileage of of new sidewalks, missing sidewalks, new trails. We didn't, we are not going to recommend active transportation at specific locations with the exception of interfacing with the county trail plans. We'll include specific recommendations on that because so much work had been done on the county trail plans. Beyond that, we want to provide a lot of flexibility to the county and to the school district and to the others to pursue grant funding, whether it be through some of the state programs such as Safe brought to school or federal programs. So we want to provide the structure in this report that is really going to help position any number of active transportation projects for successful grant applications. And that's our focus there and we would see that in specific locations might might run counter to that goal. Looking at the transit pieces, really one hundred and seventy six street serves as a dividing line between some of our transit recommendations. North of there, we really focus on increased frequency and expanding the service hours for the existing services. South of one hundred and seventy six street, including recommendations for expanded on demand transit service. We built in or incorporated the recommendations for the BRT services. Plus, in the pink line here, suggesting some on demand service extension along two hundred and twenty fourth that would predominantly serve some of the high schools that either exist there or the new proposed Bethel High School along there. So connecting in with the proposed BRT. And then in the orange, right in the middle, is a recommendation for a new bus route along one hundred and seventy sixth. So the the challenges we recognize on the transit, and we'll get to it a little bit later, is some of our recommendations go outside of the current service area and also go outside of the UGA. But there's a certain reality that the demand is there for these types of services. And the final, if we can go to the next slide, please. These are the recommendations in terms of roadway extensions or roadway widenings. I want to emphasize that these are to a certain extent illustrative corridors. It doesn't have to be at this specific location. What we've noticed is that the need exists here and providing additional connectivity or additional capacity in these general locations provides a lot of performance benefit. So it may not be a particular roadway that's shown here. It can be something in that general area. But the importance is getting some extensions to relieve some of the congestion on the major arterials, particularly the state highway system and to provide more network connectivity. There's also recommendations here that would propose extending some of the arterials and collectors outside of the UGA. We recognize that that might be a little different than some of the current policy directions, but again, that is areas where with with very targeted extensions, you can provide real benefits within the UGA and and address some broader transportation needs in the in the study area. So these are going to be recommendations to the county for consideration, the upcoming comprehensive planning process. And then I will draw your attention. There's three dash lines in the upper right hand. Those are the the three SR one sixty one, one sixty two connection options, and I'll step through those here in a minute or so. Let's see, we can go to the next slide. There are a number of of issues that simply as Washed Out as a state agency, we cannot resolve, but that greatly influence the the transportation performance in the area and really suggest the types of strategies that should and shouldn't be considered. The draft report, which will be coming out in a week or two, will go into greater detail on all of these issues. And, you know, hopefully in the in the coming years, we can explore further. And there will be great greater clarity when the comprehensive plan update is completed and some of these issues will begin to to get resolved. So I'll I'll focus on a couple of these. The bottom left is the Pierce Transit Service Area. Clearly, an important issue, given the important needs for multimodal service in the area. And we'll just point out that there is a mismatch in the boundary of the UGA and the transit service area. So kind of achieving the comprehensive plan objective of 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 intensifying development within the UGA. Got to getting a great a greater mesh between those boundaries would probably be beneficial to achieving the objectives of the of the comp plan. In in the bottom middle is natural disaster resiliency and evacuation capacity. This in particular affects the SR one sixty one, one sixty two connection. There's a lot of interest from ordering in in improving outgoing capacity during emergency events. And we'll also have recommendations in the study to to do some follow up work to look more specifically at how much additional capacity would be needed in certain scenarios. So that'll be a recommendation we have. And if we can go to the next slide, is is the final three issues that we'll be talking about. Some of the mega projects, which were on that initial slide, kind of the impact that I five HOV and the SR one sixty seven ETL might have on 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 where people travel and how they travel in South Pierce County. And then at the far right, there's a lot of change that just came about in the latest legislative session, actually the last two regarding the the focus on active transportation and how we go about measuring level of service and what that means for concurrency requirements. So these are at the very early stages and are going to play out a lot over the next two to three years. I've teased a few times SR one sixty one, one sixty two our connection on analysis. This is builds on work that the county has done over the last three to four years where they first looked at Military Road East. We were asked as part of one of the provisos to look in a little greater detail at the three alternatives, and we've done additional work costing out some of those options, looking at the benefits and the impacts of those and coming up with some very high level conceptual designs of those. So if we go to the next slide, we'll step through the first of the three alternatives would be to widen Military Road in its current location, providing an additional westbound lane. This particular alternative would require a number of upgrades at intersections and driveways along the area. And then also require, in order to avoid impacting property, would require a number of retaining walls in the blue has, I'm sorry, the blue hatched areas. in the blue has, I'm sorry, the blue hatched area you seen there where where walls would be needed in order to avoid some takens there. So it's a very, all of these are very challenging. The second one, you can go on to the next one, would be essentially taking 128th at SR162 and extending it straight west, and then curving to follow the rough alignment of Reservoir Road and connecting back to 128th Street as you approach South Hill. This is another area where it would be a lot of retaining walls, retain fill, and perhaps other structures to make the grade separation. The concept we came up with would be an entire kind of greenfield type alignment. There would not be additional provisions to provide cross streets or additional development opportunities in between. This is essentially just a connection between the two roadways. And then the third one, if we go to the next slide, would start at the same point at SR162 and 128th. But then kind of curve a little bit further south and connect south of South Hill to 144th Street. So it's very similar to the 128th, but just a different connection point as you're approaching SR161. So if we can go to the next slide, or as we kind of near the end here. Kind of the upshot of the three alternatives here is Military Road itself is it's widening that is very difficult because you're kind of doing it through an existing neighborhood. You'd need to be able to maintain access to that neighborhood and emergency access to the neighborhood while making the upgrades. And it just has a lot of geologic and other challenges in the area and would require some pretty costly upgrades to intersections along the way. While 128th and 144th are easier to construct, they still have it's an entirely new alignment, so it's actually much, much more costly. The issue is that all three of the alternatives are very high cost. We're probably talking 100 to $200 million projects for any of the three, with Military Road probably coming in at the lower end, the other two coming in at the higher end of the cost range. But for that very high cost, very high impact, you're not getting a whole lot of travel benefits outside of the immediate corridor. We had also looked at options where you extend the widening a little bit further west, maybe as far as 94th, instead of stopping it at SR161. And even with widening further to the west, you don't really provide a whole lot of benefits. None of these reduce, provide a substantial reduction on SR162 or on SR410. You just have throughout South Pierce County, just a congested roadway network. You're kind of at capacity everywhere. So adding an additional corridor here or there doesn't really solve a lot of issues that need to be addressed through land use decisions and a lot of the other unresolved issues we talked about before. So if we can go to the next steps, we are currently reviewing kind of an administrative draft of our report at this point. Our expectation is by the end of next week is to have a draft report for our advisory committees and for review by the general public. We'll be previewing those final recommendations. The week of June 26, we have a technical advisory committee and a policy advisory committee meeting. On this study, we're going to have an extended review period, at least through July, four to six week, four to six week review period, and then closing out the study at the end of September. So we expect there's going to be more back and forth in the coming, the coming week as kind of some of the pieces get refined a little bit further after our draft report is out. So that is a very lengthy step through of the two, the two projects we have underway. If there are any questions or comments on South Pierce or on SR512. Happy to entertain those.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mezier. Certainly a lot here. Thank you for digesting and summarizing it for us. Are there questions or comments about what we've heard today? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Couple questions. One of the slides, Slide 17, spoke to roundabouts and turn lanes as possible prioritizations. And I was just curious. I now understand, after looking at them in our tip, roundabouts are way more expensive. However, there's also additional benefits to roundabout. So as part of it, looking at will the roundabout not only improve safety, but also help with traffic flow when you're kind of going through? And because it says key intersections, but it also says turn lane at key intersections and the the what happens is different between those two tools.
So at any place we would propose an upgrade, we do look, we do an extensive evaluation of that specific location to look at the traffic volumes coming in on the different legs. We know the roundabout has great safety benefits, but it's not the solution for every location. So based on how traffic is at a given location, the mix of traffic, the extent to which there might be truck traffic in certain locations, predominant truck traffic, that will point to whether we might go around about or we might go with additional turn lanes and traffic signal upgrades. So this report here is kind of the first step in that there's, you know, as each location goes forward, and a consideration will be done at that location if a roundabout or turn lane and signal upgrades is the appropriate solution.
Okay. And then on the map slide where you had the new connections widening, it kind of had all the different colors. In the areas where it was a new connection, is there not a road there?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure I was tracking that. There's literally not a road there. Okay.
If I may, Councilmember Hitchens, in most of those locations, there might be a project that is already on the county CIP. So it's a matter of carrying that forward. I think there might be one location where we kind of suggested a little bit beyond where the CIP is, but we saw that there is a potential for high benefit with considering that location.
Okay. And then I think for my own education, I just at some point need to figure out how do we how do we expand Pierce Transit, like the process, which if this is a recommendation, but that's for another day. So I've got some time to learn that. And I know I have some experts in the room. So just since that's coming from you here in this study, understanding what the process is will be important. So thank you. Thank you for the information. I look forward to seeing the full report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Because we're Campbell or I are happy to talk to any members who want to know more about the convoluted process to join the public transit benefit area. It was easier, easier to get out of the transit jurisdiction than it is to get into it. There's actually a video that helps explain it that has helped me understand it. So if anybody wants that, I can find it.
Here are the link.
Vice Chair Campbell.
I would say convoluted, it's not really an accurate statement. It's not that easy. It's not as easy as convoluted. It's more difficult.
Wonderful.
Any other questions about about what we heard today? Mr. Mezier, thank you. I know you've been working with our Planning and Public Works staff and the many other partners you listed here today. Thank you for working with them to get their input and partnership. We appreciate getting this update so that we can be better communicators with our constituents about this and follow along into our part. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time this morning.
Is there any other business by members of the council this morning before we move into a closed session? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to remind everybody of the blood drive that's happening on Wednesday. Last check, there were five, six or five openings as of this morning. So if you still were thinking about it and wanted to see if there was a slot available, but we filled up pretty quick. So they added more, and now we're just trying to fill those. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Is there any other business by staff this morning in study session? Not seeing any. My understanding from Ms. Long, and I'll confirm with Mr. Taylor or Mr. Cox, we can move into a closed session. There's not going to be any announcements coming out of the closed session, and the closed session being different than an executive session, we don't need to announce the return time. Is that, is that your understanding?
That is correct. Sorry, Jeff. That's correct.
Is Ms., is the staff to support the closed session prepared to be here in person?
So the staff from the department that will be supporting this are joining via Zoom.
Okay.
Do you all have Zoom links in your Outlook calendars?
Great. I see that. Okay. So we do have closed session links on our Outlook calendar. So we're if there's no other business by council or staff, we will move to our offices to do the closed session via Zoom, and we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.